Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Gadsden City Council meeting on December the 2nd. We have a great crowd of young people here today, and we're so excited to have you here and to join us. I'd like to remind everyone, please make sure all cell phones are turned to the all for vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Beck.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson is absent today. We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith if he will lead the invocation for us. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. The only Father, we come to you now in the humblest way. We know how. Come about his and humble hearts, thanking you for another day. God here on this side, Father, we thank you for all of our guests that are present today. We thank you for this administration. Thank you for our mayor, our council, God, and we just ask for your wisdom, your insight, to lead our great city, God, and we'll be ever careful to give you every bit of the praise, the glory, and all the honor. We ask it all in the master's name of Jesus. We do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on November 25th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of November 21st through the 27th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
All right. Now, we're at Agenda Item 7, which is what we're all here for today, to have you guys with us. Today, we have as our special guest, the Cusa Christian High School football team. Cusa Christian, as I think most of everybody knows, is playing in the state finals this coming Friday at 3:00 at Protective Stadium in Birmingham. And Coach, and guys, we couldn't be more proud of y'all. What a, what a, what a great season, and we're honored and pleased to have you here with us today. And at this time, I'm going to call and apologize for not knowing your name.
My name is Julie Delp. I'm the principal at Cusa Christian School.
Oh, wonderful, Ms. Delp.
Yes.
Well, welcome, and we're glad you're here today with all your, your players. Please tell us what you have on your heart here.
Yes, thank you so much for having these young men. They are, they represent our school and our city with excellence, some grit, some determination that has brought us here. These boys play on both sides of the ball, most of them, and so they don't come out of the game, and they've just showed a lot of resiliency, and I'm super proud of them. And thank you for having us.
Oh, well, thank you, and we're proud of you guys as well. And so, it's just exciting that the great season that, that y'all have had, and now culmination of this Friday, we're certainly, the whole city will be pulling for the conquerors.
Yes, sir. I'd like to introduce our head coach, Rush Probst, and he would like, has a few words and would like to introduce his coaches.
We'd love to have Coach Probst come up and speak.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Good morning, Coach.
Good morning. I appreciate you having me. I want, I want to first say that I'm very appreciative to Mayor Ford and our city council for inviting us here. It's, it's a big, it's a big deal to us, and again, we're, we're grateful to be here. And as Ms. Delp said, our, our football team, there's, I mean, several interviews in the last couple of days, and the three things that I can, she said them, the three things these kids are, they're, they're resilient, they're tough, and their, and their versatility is just unmatched because they do play every snap, and it's hard. They've played a lot of bigger schools, one in Georgia to start the season, two, two 6'8" teams that we played this year, lost by one point to Pell City in a game we probably should have won 90% of the time, and then we beat Blount Automobile. So, and then Friday night, up at Pisgah, we, we got behind 14 to nothing, and, and, but the kids showed resilience and fight and grit, and fought back and won a tough, hard football game up there on the mountain. So, it was cold, but I was proud of them and how they played and how they responded to some adversity. So, again, I think, you know, Gadsden's sort of special to me. I think, growing up in Oatchee, Gadsden was the place we used to come to all the time, and very proud of the city, very proud of what Mayor Ford's doing, what y'all are doing to make our city even better, and a lot of progressive thoughts out there, and I'm very appreciative of that and the things that y'all got coming over the next several months and years. So, I like living here, I sort of feel like I'm home, and, and I always want to stay here a long time. Thank, thank you for having me. But I want to introduce some, you know, our players, first our coaches, but, you know, when I call your name, guys, sort of raise your hand. Our offensive coordinator, Larry Williams, our defensive coordinator, Teddy Whitmire in the back, Barry Smith, our receiver coach, Jackson Justice, Jackson here, and John David Probst, my son. I think, I think one may be in bed, and the other's working. Benny Dupree, I saw Benny earlier, there he is. He works with our receivers. Brian Haynes, our offensive line coach, in the corner, Eric Albright, the coach of our secondary, he's sort of a co-coordinator, Ivan Catlin, we got our D-line coach, Ronnie Flanagan, our defensive line coach, Reggie Ruffin, and, and Brody Badger, our linebacking coach. These are our staff, our support staff. Obviously, I'd be remiss to leave out my wife, or I'd be in trouble. She's in the back, right, right there. She, she sort of runs the place, I just sort of show up. So, I know we've got other, we have a support staff with Spencer Crane, and Jason Robertson, Scott Brooks, and Skylar Dillard, and Michael Moore, who drove us here today, and Matthew Mills, who's our rehab partner here in town, and, and A.J. Reagan, and Josh Dodd, he's one of our assistant ADs, and Jack Justice, our AD, and our team chaplain, Alan Frisler, and then, of course, we're covered by Brick Boy every day. So, that's sort of who we are. And then, of course, our captains, raise your hand, Zaden Franklin, Bradley May, LJ Mustella, Grayson Malone, and Kayden Mickler. Those are the guys, sort of, our leaders. We have eight, we have eight, nine seniors, eight seniors that start. We have about five juniors and about five sophomores that make up the bulk of this team. Thirty, there's 34 of them, grade seven through 12. So, we are a thin bunch. I did an interview out of Auburn today, and it was, Lynette, Lynette has a really good football team. We're going to be challenged to the max. You know, they have 14 seniors, 14 juniors, and about five younger guys, sort of, so the depth they'll have is, will show, I'm sure, at some point in time in the game. But our kids are, are fault, they show grit, and it'll be a heck of a football game. I think one of the best matchups in the Super Seven. Again, thanks for having us. Again, very appreciative for, for what you're doing for the city and, and allowing us to be here today.
Well, you're welcome, Coach. And what we normally do, we'll get you guys to come up, and then we'll, we'll get a picture. But I want to point out something, just a little personal privilege, is the very first person to graduate from Cusa Christian High School is our city clerk, Ivan Nelson.
Now, what year was that? Now, what year was that? What year was that?
1977.
Okay.
Yeah. Ivan and I both graduated high school in 1977. Ivan was the-
And Ivan was four years old then.
Child prodigy, intellectual child prodigy. But, yeah, she's the first graduate of, of your high school, and she's been our city clerk, and she's worked here for, oh goodness, 41 years as our city clerk, so, and the best one in the state. And y'all are going to be the best two-way football team in the state come Friday night, about, oh, I don't know, 5:30 or so, 6:00, right around in there.
Right around 6:00.
Well, if you will, Michael, you, you got your camera, I guess, and Coach, if y'all could, just the whole team, the coaches, if y'all could, you'll have to get some right in front of us, and then some on the, down there at the floor, and we'll get a good picture.
And you just don't kind of camp, find a gap. If you can't see the camera, the camera can't see you.
All right. No cockroaches.
Proud of you guys.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Hey, while they're leaving, hey, can I want one more thing?
Thank you.
I left one guy out. Our director of football ops is a guy named Spencer Orange, and he does a phenom, he's not here, but he does a phenomenal job. He's, he's a true do-it, do-it-all, and without, without him coaching, in today's world of high school football, you have to have a really good director of football ops guy that handles everything outside of coaching on the field, and he does it, and he's just not here. I wanted to make sure I got that right. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. All right, best of luck. We're pulling for you. All right, that was exciting. Pulling for those guys, it's going to be a big, big day, Friday, big day for Gadsden. All right, we are now at Item 8 on our agenda. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving alcoholic beverage and tobacco licenses. This is for M3 Bar and Grill LLC, located at 710 East Broad Street in District 2, has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license and tobacco-only license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, Item 9. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to recess the council meeting in order to conduct the work session.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Do we have a second?
We get a second?
Second.
Second, all right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to recess the council meeting, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the recess.
The Chair will entertain a motion to reconvene the council meeting.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to reconvene the council meeting, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to reconvene.
All right, Agenda Item 11 is unfinished business. We have two ordinances that were presented last week for first reading. 11A is an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 42, Emergency Services Article 2, Alarm Systems. References to fire alarms are being moved from Chapter 42 to Chapter 50. The code sections referencing burglary alarm systems will remain in Chapter 42. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance. Some moves there, a second.
Second.
There we go. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Item 11B is an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 50, Fire Prevention and Protection. This will add Article 4 Fire Alarm Ordinance to Chapter 50. The main purpose is to reduce or eliminate incidents of false fire alarms and to encourage alarm users and businesses to properly maintain and operate their alarm systems. After five false alarms within a calendar year, penalties will be $100 for the first offense, with an increase for each subsequent offense up to $500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Item 12 is a resolution authorizing conveyance of surplus equipment. This is for a 2024 air burner S330 fire box that the City of Florence has offered to purchase for $208,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? I will need to abstain from this vote, as I have a prior business relationship with the City of Florence.
Okay.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt with one extension, abstention.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to Item 13, comes under first readings. Item 13 is an ordinance amending City Code Section 118-124 by adding the restriction of stopping, standing, or parking a vehicle, including a motorcycle, on a sidewalk. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 14 is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located on Chadwick Drive in District 2. Dayland Stateon has offered $99 for the property. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 15 is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at 1327 Chestnut Street in District 5. Imogen Suttle Young has offered $500 for the property. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 16 is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at 2319 Chestnut Street in District 6. Brenda Johnson has offered $500 for the property. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. All right, Item 17 is reserved for new business. We have, I think, three items today that came out of the work session.
I'll do one. You want to do the rest of the-
Yep. You gonna do them?
No, I have no idea. I'm just a city councilman. Why would I know what's going on in the city council meeting?
I definitely agree with you there.
All right. Well, I think these were brought up into the, according to Ivan, the city clerk, that we're going to put them into new business.
Got it.
Because that's what it is, it's new business. So, just need a motion to do so. You, you do the first one, councilman, or just do one of them? Whichever one you want to do.
I mean, why stop now? I'll, I'll do this one.
Okay.
As relates to the Kate McKenzie and Philip Williams.
All righty.
The previous, I mean, the last two are similar, so they can be combined. This resolution authorizes acceptance of donation for Kate, from Kate McKenzie and Philip Williams. This contribution is a donation of 500 to 700 Hot Wheel cars. The method behind this is for traffic stops that includes children to, hopefully, if the parent doesn't get a ticket, the kid can, well, if they do get a ticket, the kid can leave with a smile on their face, with a Hot Wheel toy. But hopefully, the parent don't get a ticket. But either way, this is just a nice gesture that was seen in another city to bring forth to our city to consider. And this gives the mayor authorization from the council to accept these Hot Wheels for the police department for the traffic stops that include children. Asking for today for immediate consideration.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, thank you, Councilman Avery.
Sure.
All right, we have two other items to consider, one from Etowah Cares and one from Friends of the Falls for the e-bikes. I have a volunteer to bring up one or both of those.
I will.
All right, thank you.
This comes from League Department, 2025, 1534. It is a resolution authorizing acceptance of donation from Etowah Cares. It is, the mayor is authorized to accept a donation from Etowah Care, Cares in the amount of $4,000 for the purpose of purchasing a swing hybrid bicycle for the Gadsden Police Department, and in demonstrating today, this will be better suited for the area at the Falls, the trails, and all. I'm asking my colleagues to consider this for immediate consideration.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Latham. All right, we have one from the donation from Friends of the Falls. Get a volunteer to do that, you want to do that one?
Again, this is from the League Department, is a resolution authorizing acceptance of donation from Friends of the Falls. The mayor is authorized to accept a donation from Friends of the Falls in the amount of $4,000, again, for the purpose of purchasing a swing hybrid bicycle for the Gadsden Police Department. This is much like the first, it, it will be better suited for the trails and the area, well, off-road trails and all, and I'm asking my colleagues to consider this for today.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, I believe that concludes our new business, and we will move to department reports, committees, and boards. We have any of those this morning from the administration? All right, seeing none, we go to remarks by the mayor and council. Is anybody from the mayor's office able to share with us? Tina, you will.
I have several. So, first, to recognize the winners of the recycling contest, which ended the week before, around November 18th, the elementary school division with 2,990 pounds, Walnut Park Elementary.
Way to go.
The elementary schools collected a total of 12,960 pounds of cardboard. The middle school division, collecting 390 pounds, Litchfield Middle School. Middle School Division, they collected a total of 750 pounds. Then, Gadsden City High School, ninth through 12th grade, collecting 180 pounds. The senior class won the high school for it, and the high school collected a total of 270 pounds. There was a grand total of 13,980 pounds collected during recycle week, which is really good. We estimate somewhere around 9,000 additional pounds generated just by that contest that week. So, it works, it keeps it out of the landfill. Thanks to everyone who came to the community meetings, we gathered a lot of really good information. We worked as hard as we could to get any problems that were brought to us rectified within three days after the meeting. I think we did a good job with that. We went out and checked every job personally from the mayor's office. Thank you to the employees who participated in the United Way rallies, we had a good showing in that. Here We Grow Again, welcome to Forest Durham Apartments, 56-unit income-based complex. We're excited about this, it's been fun working with them, and excited to see what else they do in Gadsden. As you know, Christmas on Cusa is going full speed ahead, we've converted to ice skating, and also, Christmas at the Falls is ongoing. The Christmas parade is scheduled for 5:30 this Friday, weather permitting. Stay tuned Wednesday afternoon, we will make a call. And then, last but not least, thanks to everyone who helped with toys from Santa for Gadsden Fire Department. That was last Friday, Black Friday, Plaid Friday, as I prefer to call it. Fire Department collected over $13,000 to purchase toys for children in our area for Christmas, and so, that was a great event, that I believe is the second highest amount they've ever collected, and they are still counting the change, so we could actually break the record for the largest amount collected.
Outstanding. Thank you so much. All right, we'll go with Councilwoman Latham in District 1 for her comments.
Thank you, President Beck. First of all, it was good to see, to have Cusa Christian School with us today, and for their accomplishment, their football team, and, and their coach, we are hoping and praying that they would do their best plan this coming weekend and bring home a championship for the city and their school, and also, we wish them the very best this weekend. Again, let me congratulate those recycling winners who were just mentioned, Walnut Park, Litchfield High School, Litchfield Middle School, say high school, because I graduated from high school, but Litchfield Middle School, and then, the senior class at the high school. Thank you for participating in it, and I know our baby would be disappointed because she basically cleaned our house of all the cardboard that, that she could come up with. And thank you to Katie McKenzie and Philip Williams, Etowah Cares, and Friends of the Falls for your donations in an, in an attempt to help make our city better and help us function better to make sure that we provide the best quality of life to our citizens. And I want to just remind those constituents who are in District 1, who are in the area of the expansion for the landfill, that their informative meeting tonight at the venue from 5 to 7, if you have any questions, there's a plethora of information that has already been provided, but some of you may still have questions and concerns. Mr. Williams will be there tonight from 5 to 7. I do encourage you to attend and, and, or stop by and get the information that you need so that you'll be well-informed of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilman Smith.
Light on. Are you, Mike? Well, as I always say, another good day of government today. It's good to see Cusa Christian here, we certainly hope. I'm sorry, thank you, Councilman Avery. Certainly wish them luck, I don't know if y'all know it or not, but Coach, their head coach has eight state championships, so if they win, you know, that'll be number nine for, for him at least, and so, we certainly hope that they can pull out the victory this week. Also, want to congratulate all the schools that were mentioned, who were winners of the contest, so proud of them. Also, want to thank the City of Gadsden for 27 years of feeding. I know former Mayor Porch came to us last week and, and spoke to us about that, and I thank for, for the challenge that came to the churches to take on that responsibility. As most of you know, I was a little bit hesitant about that at first, but the churches came together with a collaborative effort, and it looks like we fed about 6,000 people for the first year, so it was just a collaborative effort, and just want to thank God for all those who came together, leaders, organizations, 211, Etowah Food Bank, there were so many people who donated, and all the volunteers as well, so thank Pastor Simmons for rallying everybody together. Somebody's got to pull everybody together, so we, we're thankful for that. Also, want to just thank the Blueprint for being here, good to see their staff, owners, and founders. In our agenda meeting today, they're based out of Dallas, but also have an office here in the City of Gadsden, of course, take care of my business and personal things, so I appreciate them being here as well. And that's all I have, thank God for the mayor and council, and let's continue to move forward here in the City of Gadsden.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Avery.
Mr. President, ditto to most of what has been stated already, I want to also congratulate personally, Cusa Christian Football Team, band Cheers, support system. My son is a member of Cusa Christian and in the band, so big, a big shout out to Matthias as they get ready to travel to Birmingham and fight hard on the field to bring home a championship. I want to give an update by way of CCRC that the annual Christmas parade is canceled for this year, just due to some unforeseen things as, along with the, not holistically the problem, but the drainage there being taken care of on T- problem, but the drainage there being taken care of on Tusculus Avenue, so we don't really want anyone to be in harm's way or kind of be affected by what is going on there. So instead, we would like to be stationary, they would like to be stationary, and so what is going on, what are they doing instead? So a tour drive, a community tour drive is being conducted currently, a few businesses called and got together, and so CK Creations, West Gaston Funeral Home, Black Top Burners, and Men on Bikes, along with CNJ Crab Shack and Jazz It Up Boutique are drop-off locations for toys. And there is another generous contribution that has been given, that a businessman gave 200 toys, he don't want to be recognized, but he appreciate being able to give and the acceptance of the gifts. And again, that toy drive is going on currently, those names of the businesses are drop-off locations, and the toy drive will end through December the 12th, the Friday before the event, which is December the 13th at 10:30, Tusculus Avenue at Carver Square. That event, December the 30th, would be Cookies with Santa, that will consist of live music, photos with Santa, surprise gifts, food, drinks and more. And so, again, whereas the Christmas parade will not be, that particular Christmas parade on Tusculus Avenue will not carry on this year, the Cookies with Santa event will replace it instead. That event begins at 3:00 PM and ends at 6:00 PM at Carver Community Center. Wasn't here last week, so I do want to take an opportunity to thank the citizens for the opportunity, again, to be a part of the National League of Cities. I have the opportunity to serve on two boards and then sit on a committee as well. We are on several calls throughout the month that advocate for municipalities, townships and things of communities of our sides, pushing policies and legislation to our congressmen and women to address issues near and far. And so, I'm very honored to have served on those boards and with the possibility of becoming secretary of one of the committees that I currently sit on as the historian. And so, we'll wait for that opportunity if it comes, if not, it is still a great opportunity to serve, and so I'm grateful to do so, and thank you to the citizens for entrusting in myself and colleagues to go and travel for these educational purposes. I also want to give kudos to all of those during the Thanksgiving holiday that took of themselves to provide goods and needs and resources to those that were in need, from volunteering, giving of cash contributions, and from your home, your church, your building, your business, whatever it may have been, thank you so much for stepping up to the plate to do so, for those that do not have the opportunities that we have or the resources that we have to do that for others. I want to take an opportunity, personal privilege, to thank the bike store owner, the guys that came up with the purchase of the bikes to the police department. He is a gracious guy that has also given to our organization in District Three for bikes. We've taken the opportunity to receive those same contributions to make sure that kids had bikes for Christmas. And then Davis Bailey, who I went to school with at MS Ants, who is a local attorney here in Gaston, a good friend of mine as well. And so, thank you all, all groups and all those that gave for their minds to give and hearts to give for the reasons that they gave. I want to read something, my wife thought it would be good for me to read it and not kind of just, kind of speak from my mind about it. I feel that it's very important that it be considered, if I can get it pulled up, if I can't, I'll do so later. So it was brought to my attention, and I just want to address it if I can take the moment to. I had it pulled up, but it looks like my service was affected here. This came from a Gaston City student that was present at an event, and it was, I guess, maybe a weekend or two ago, a Gaston City school student that lives in District Three. And so, I wrote this just to kind of just be clear on some things. This weekend, I sent a video concerning leadership in the city and how District Three is being either ignored, punished, or not a true priority because of poor leadership practices. Real leadership isn't about who you agree with, it's about who you are willing to serve. In moments of political disagreement, it is essential for those in power to rise above personal conflict and never punish entire communities because of differing views. When leaders govern with fairness and integrity, they strengthen public trust, create stability and open the door for real problem solving that benefits every citizen. But when leadership becomes punitive, communities suffer and creates divisions, slow progress and place families, neighborhoods and even local economies, rather, at risk. No community deserves to be caught in the crossfire of political dispute. True leadership requires courage, courage to prioritize people over politics, courage to honor the humanity and dignity of others even when disagreements exist, courage to move beyond ego and towards solutions that uplift everyone. Our democracy grows stronger when leadership choose collaboration over conflict, transparency over retaliation or justice over favoritism. When we work together, we create safer neighborhoods, thrive cities, thrive in cities and a future where every community has the opportunity to prosper. This is how real progress is made, that is how we should lead. I will speak more on these matters within the next couple of days to come. District Three, you've elected me to lead trust and leadership before I was ever elected and knew that I would not be broken even to the point one is trying to bend me for self-righteous gain. As a community, we will not tolerate such actions. I have been confronted on this matter, and it's been very, it is very upsetting to not only to the young person that brought it to me, but also to other citizens that have brought it to my attention. I will give an update on what has happened in District Three since the leadership has taken office, and we'll break down the documents and those things concerning the Grow Gaston Plan, and we'll share those concerns with you. I am a young, energetic, educated visionary who has a determined personality to make District Three a beautiful and growing community. With that, District Three hosted community events, promotes beauty and cleanliness, support local small growing businesses, foster connections and support while encouraging participation and growth. We will stand together, one way or another, somehow we will. And so, at the end of the day, my statement as it relates to the concerns from that young student that participated at this event and those concerned citizens, that, listen, in time, things will get better. Let's continue to push through and have a locked-in geared focus on what we want our community to be, and it will happen eventually. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Fight on, Cusa Christian. Thank you to my boy Philip Williams for the Hot Wheels donation, I'm really glad that you finally decided to let go of some of that ridiculous collection. You're a grown man. Thank you to Edwah Cares, my man Cantani, there's always been a tremendous just presence in this community, and of course, the freaks at Noculula, Friends of the Falls, those guys are absolutely fanatical about the Falls up there, and I'm sorry that your dear leader couldn't be here today to recognize you guys. My thoughts to Councilman Robinson and his wife Kristy, I think they're under the weather pretty bad today, so I hope they get feeling better, really good. And last thing, just because I get tired of typing sometimes on social media, and it's easier for me to just say it out loud because I can't keep up with everybody's comments, but there was a post made, I think on one of the groups, what happening, what's happening in Gaston pages or something, about this project we have going to build a swimming pool at the community center in East Gaston, and for whatever reason, I cannot imagine why, it became controversial and people started acting like there was some sort of, I don't know, we're using community development block grant funds to build a swimming pool at a community center. I can't for the life of me imagine why anybody would have any problem with that, but I just want to clarify, a couple of people said that, you know, it's no secret that the previous administration was very fiscally conservative and left us in a good financial position as a city, and they want to make sure that this administration and this council is not squandering that with all of these projects that we've announced. And the other one was this kind of a call to the carpet that had some demands that concerning the pool project in East Gaston, that there be transparency about the design plans, number two, open reporting of the bids and contractors used in the process, a commitment from the council and the mayor that this would actually go to benefit individuals in East Gaston, and I think the fourth demand was that we accept honest and open feedback and engage the community in the design process. So, I'm just going to start from the top. Number one, this city has more cash reserves than it had when this administration took office right now, so let's just get that out of the way. Our city revenues have increased by 10% year over year, every year for the last three years. We are in an exponentially better financially position than we were when we started this administration in this term, so I just want to clarify that. In addition to all of the projects that we have going, there are a couple of reasons for that. Number one, we've had a really aggressive focus on being more business friendly in general, that's increased the business sales tax revenues that have been collected, which have grown the budget. Number two, something that I can say is one of the only two members here on this council that were from the past administration, we have been very aggressive about seeking out and securing grant dollars that the previous administration was not able to pursue. So, I mean, I'm talking excess of $25, $30 million over the past three years that this city has brought into our coffers, grant dollars. Now people go, oh, that's grant money, you know, it's just a handout. Well, our taxpayer and citizens are paying in that money to the federal government, we're paying in that money to the state government. I'm telling you right now, regardless of what you believe on taxes or, you know, government tax collections, I agree with you probably on every single one of your talking points, but if they're going to give this grant money out anyway, I'm all for us going and getting as much of it as we can back into this community. So I will never apologize for going and aggressively seeking grants in this community. It's our money, we paid it in, and I want it back. I think that's pretty logical. As far as the talking points for the pool, number one, we had a citywide Grow Gaston Plan that was developed over two years, where we had community meetings every single, on every single topic, maybe not in every single district, but there were several multiple community meetings where people had the opportunity to give feedback on what they would like to see in this community. This is not something that we just came up with out of nowhere. The conversation about having a swimming pool, number one, in this community, number two, having a swimming pool in certain areas, has been going on for years around here. This is an answer to the community's request for a swimming pool, okay? This isn't just our idea to come up with. Number two, anybody who follows city council meetings or knows anything about how government works, knows that every single bid that we put out is public, it is made public to where anyone can see it, we are legally bound to award those bids to the lowest responsible vendor, the lowest responsible vendor. That means the person who has all the requirements met, has all the certifications, has all of the insurance and bonds necessary to perform work for a municipality, and if they're the lowest responsive bidder, and our city engineer reviews their bid and determines that they're a reliable and accredited contractor, they will be awarded the bid, so there is no worry about somebody getting a bid to their buddy or something like that. It's all public, it's all available to be seen and reviewed anytime you want to. And the last thing I'll say is, you don't get to demand that you be included in the design process, okay? I'm sorry. If you want to be included down to that level of detail with every project that's going on in this city, run for office, put your name out there and get elected. You don't get to sit on the internet and say, I want to decide what color the walls are painted. That's why we're here. We were elected to do the citizens' work. We represent our constituents. Your citizen representatives right here, these council representatives are here, they're available, you can call them anytime you want to, you can email me anytime you want to, I pick up the phone every time, and if I don't, I call you back. You can ask me anything you want to, and I'm even the one that's willing to have a conversation with you about what color the walls are painted. But you don't get to get on Facebook and say, I demand to know everything and be included in the design details of every project. I'm not going to do it, it's impossible. Can you imagine, there's 35,000 people plus in this city, can you imagine having to go door to door and talk to everybody about what they wanted to see in a swimming pool? I mean, it's just not realistic, so please, man, at some point, y'all have to separate this national intellectual ping pong game you're playing with government, national politics, you have to separate that from local government. I'm not some big bad dude in Washington DC commuting around on a jet, man, I'm from here, I was born here my whole life, we all are from here. Councillor Avenue, thank you. Just stop acting like we're all up here getting rich and trying to steal from y'all, I mean, this is crazy, man, it's just crazy. And I hope that I came across very eloquent with that. See y'all.
That's well said, that's thank you, I was following that discourse. Councilwoman Monatra, are you with us over there?
Well, I'll give it my best.
Come on, you can do it, what's in that cup over there?
Recently, there was an article in The Messenger regarding the scores or report cards for our schools, and so it is published, and it's on the government website for the state of Alabama for the 2024-25 school year. And I just want to highlight five of our eight elementary schools that did a really marvelous job on reducing their absentee rate. And I'm going to start with Adams. Adams Elementary prior year had a 19% absentee rate, they got it to 11. Donahoo had a 12% absentee rate, they got it, they cut it in half, they got it to six. Floyd, thanks to our friend Eddie Nichols at the Dream Center, their absentee rate was 18, they cut it to 12. Striplin took theirs from 15% absentee rate to 11, and Walnut Park cut theirs from 32% absentee rate prior year to 13. So, those five elementary schools really did a fantastic job. So, because if you don't come to school, you don't learn. So, I'm just appreciative of all the efforts that the parents, teachers and any staff members had with all of that information. Thank you.
Wonderful news, thank you for pointing that out. Our education system has really stepped up here in the last few years, and things are, I think, headed in a very good direction. Y'all, it's been a great day, to borrow Councilman Smith, it's been a great day of government. Wonderful to have the Cusa Christian Football Team here this morning. We certainly wish our local team the best of luck in their game against Lynette this Friday at 3 o'clock at Protective Stadium. Friday at 3 o'clock at Protective Stadium. It's a great stadium downtown Birmingham. Hope the weather cooperates and hope that they bring back the state title. Also want to chime in on the, the e-bikes that we received from our Friends of the Falls and then that was just a, a great gift and our Etowah Cares group that consistently raises money and then puts that money back into the city. Two, two really fine groups. And then my favorite one, I guess, is the Hot Wheels. 500 to 700 Hot Wheel cars from Katie and Philip Williams, not Katie Williams, Katie McKenzie and Philip Williams had the idea to do that. Our police officers are going to have Hot Wheel cars. If they pull over someone or come across a situation, child's involved, that child's going to get a Hot Wheel car, a brand new Hot Wheel car, and that's going to put a smile on that, on that child's face. It's the little things, y'all, that we do in our community like that, that make a world of difference. You know, the people don't know how much you care until they see you caring for them and I think that, that speaks volumes. I think it could even tie back into the absenteeism. I mean, when people care, people, people show up. And speaking of caring, the Etowah County Food Bank, Marie Johnson is our executive director for the last oh, two or three years and she has done a marvelous job. She was kind of the founder of, of the Family Success Center and retired from there, but retirement didn't feel good to her, so she's back in serving our community in a, in a big way. Really responded well, our community responded well to the call for, at Thanksgiving. A lot of food was given out at our local churches. Mayor Porch, thank you and Pastor Simmons, thank y'all for what you've done to kind of pivot on the community Thanksgiving. You see a lot of comments and things and most of the comments are people that haven't really been involved. They don't know what it's like to have to cook that much food and to do it all in a week's time. It's just, it's, it's exhausting for people that are, that are doing that and it got so big, it just kind of outgrew itself. But our churches responded and, and I think it's even going to be better. And that's Pastor Simmons and Mayor Porch's vision is that it's going to be better than it probably ever, ever was. It won't happen the very first year, but we fed about 6,000 or 6,000 people were fed through our, our churches and that's, that's the hands and the feet of Jesus in our community in a very vibrant way. So very, very excited to see that. I want to also give a notice that this coming Saturday at the Gaston Mall and at Nokalula Falls, there's Salvation Army's going to have our annual roadblock. And so you'll be seeing us out there dodging cars and trucks, trying to get money so that we can buy Christmas for families in Etowah County that are not doing well. So please, if you can, give us your coins and change, we sure would appreciate that. I was following Councilman Wilson's Facebook. He's, he's pretty good at typing, I, I can't type that fast, but I, I agree with everything that you were saying, Councilman Wilson. It's just, it's amazing. You know, we live in a constitutional republic. Everybody wants to throw out the word democracy and things like that and, and that's applicable. But what you're seeing up here is a constitutional republic, whereas I represent, we all represent about, oh, a short of 5,000 people in, in each district. And so you get to vote, we get to vote on us that we think that person will vote the way I would vote if I was sitting up there. And that's a representative form of government, it's called a constitutional republic. And that's the way that it works. It's, if you, you can't, as Councilman Wilson was pointing out, you can't drill it down to the, just the finite where we have to get every decision that is made up here, we have to get everybody's opinion. We've already got your opinion, you voted for us. That's already been done. It would be, it's physically impossible for us to run every decision by every voter because again, how do we know what majority wants what? How do I know in District Four, how everybody wants me to, to vote here? We don't have a mechanism where I can hit a button and see how many people vote for me on how I'm supposed to vote. It just doesn't work that way. It's not a perfect government system, but it's the best in the world and it's the best the world has ever seen. So, and we do the best we can. We don't get it right every time, we're going to make mistakes, but it's the best that there is. And so bear with us as we go down this road and please reach out to us. My phone rings all the time. I have two phones. We all have a city phone and a personal phone. And I've got social media accounts and emails and I hear from you all the time and I enjoy that. That's why I do what I do. But that's how you, that's how it works. Let me know what you think. But don't demand and, and want to do things as Councilman Wilson was saying, it just doesn't work that way. It's not the way government was created to work and it works a lot more efficient doing it the way that, that America does it. So that's why everybody wants to come here. Have y'all noticed? A lot of people that don't live in America want to come to America and that's a great thing because we have the best system. So something's going right. But at any rate, y'all heard a lot of sermons today and, and sometimes it's good to give some sermons. Sometimes it's, I think I might be growing some hair back, I don't know. Feel a little bit better. But I want everybody to have a great week, be weather aware. Y'all, it's going to get cold. Check in on your neighbors, check in on elderly people that, that live in your neighborhood. Make sure everybody has what they need and, you know, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. All right, thanks. Everybody have a great week.